Five P M. Regular meeting, the first item before we get to the end of the agenda, the approval or anything like that is our best and then some recognitions. Mr. Sale?
I need, I'm, oh my goodness, I'm going to do my best to say this, and if I say it incorrectly, someone correct my pronunciation. Ismael Rivera. Did I get it?
Yeah.
Did I get it? Oh, come on up here. You're next on The Price is Right. Come on. Someone is here to give you an award, right? Stand right up beside that microphone. You don't have to say anything.
I told me I'd give the whole speech.
No, ma'am, you do.
No, I, okay.
So Ismael is a teacher's dream. He is curious, he is intelligent, he is kind, and he is polite. He has taken the initiative to clean the cafeteria, sweep the floors every day, the entire cafeteria. He's inspired other people to do that as well. And that's why I chose him as our student of the month with our best and then some.
You are amazing. Congratulations. How about Luke Rodick? Are you here tonight?
No.
That's all right, we'll save it. Gemma Mercer, did I say your first? That's such an unusual spelling. Gemma Mercer. Gemma, did you know that I taught your mother? Yes, I'm not old.
It shouldn't shock you, but yeah. Gemma, this is pretty special. Gemma Mercer was chosen by the fourth grade team, they couldn't be here tonight, so they asked me to present, as a great example of our best and then some. As a student, Gemma goes above and beyond what is expected. She works hard and sets exceeds her personal goals and helps others meet their goals in the process. I've actually watched her do this. Students in Ms. Neal's class know they can go to Gemma for help both academically and personally. She exhibits kindness by being compassionate to others and lending an ear to someone having a bad day. Gemma always has a positive attitude and is willing to take on more responsibility in and out of the classroom. She is a member of our West Student Lighthouse Team, and she realizes that small acts of kindness can make a big change. Gemma participates in gymnastics and Little Ninjas training. Gemma is very deserving of this honor and is truly an example of our best and then some. Way to go, Gemma.
You guys get back up there.
She doesn't know, she's waiting for you to tell her. Peyton Paris, who might that be?
I have with me Peyton Paris, and he is a sixth grader at Swain Middle School, and I had his teachers write a little, little write-up about him, and so I'm gonna read that. You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. In the short time that Peyton has been a student at Swain Middle School, he has already made a remarkable impression. He is one of the kindest students we've had the pleasure of teaching. Friendly with everyone, always willing to lend a hand and quick to brighten our days with his humor. Peyton is a strong self-advocate who works hard to maintain his well-being and takes his studies seriously. He consistently strives to meet and often exceed the expectations set by his teachers and himself. We are so proud of all that he has accomplished so far and can't wait to see him continue to grow throughout the school year. Congratulations, Peyton.
All right, I'm in for Ms. Kephart. She couldn't be here tonight, but she had some kind things to say. It is a true pleasure to recognize Bristol with this award. She exemplifies kindness, integrity, and an unwavering commitment to excellence in everything she does. Always calm and sweet-tempered, she brings a sense of positivity and respect to every classroom she enters. Never a disturbance, she quietly leads by example by offering help to classmates, supporting teachers, and approaching every challenge with grace and determination. Whether inside the classroom or out in the community, she consistently goes above and beyond what is asked of her, making a lasting impression through her generosity, diligence, and genuine care for others. We are proud to honor Bristol Brown with our Best and Then Some Award.
Thank you all. Can we give them another round? Now, you're welcome to say for the rest of the meeting if you want to. Typically, they only last about four hours. I'm just kidding. If you want to sit around, sit around. Whenever you're ready.
All right, we'll begin. Father, I pledge a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and equal rights with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Gracious help and Father, Lord God, we bear an order to give before you this afternoon, Lord. Thank you for another good day you've given us, God. We thank you for health and strength, Father. God, we thank you for all our students and faculty, Lord, for our best and then some. Your heavenly Father, God, and how they excel, Father, we thank you for them. Ask you to bless our school, bless our school system, Lord, help our faculty, our administration, God, help our school board, Lord, to ever do what you'd have us to do. We ask you to lead, guide, and direct, and your blessings on this meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
I call the meeting to order, and the first item is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions? Mr. Sale?
If we could please, Cody, add an F to discuss the possibility of an Article forty-six drawdown and a G to discuss water and sewer on Black Hills. I have information to share with you that I've gotten from our architect and our contractor. And then, Cody, if it's applicable, and you are, the board is willing to adopt a policy, there's a policy we've been looking at, I think it's forty-three eighteen, and we need to put an action item D for that policy, and then a placeholder holder for Article forty-six if you all want to approve that tonight. Okay? I think we probably should go ahead and put those on the agenda, and then if we decide, if you decide not to use them, then that's fine. All right?
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the placeholders, if you will, that Mr. Sale has mentioned for the action and discussion items for tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Say.
Any further discussion? All favor by show of hands? Approved? Approval of consent agenda?
There's nothing to add or to take away from the consent agenda that I know of at this time.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Say. Any further discussion? All favor by show of hands? Passes. That begins with, do we have any public comment?
Did you see, I don't see any public comment. No, sir.
Okay. I don't know if we need to go into closed session.
Okay. I'm good with not.
Okay. With that, that will start us at item three, discussion, paid personnel.
There's nothing to discuss with personnel unless, I put that in there just in case we want to have closed session and then, and then make any changes. It's placeholder.
I don't see any. We go to the B, land transaction.
Land transaction. I just want to give you an update that we've closed officially on the Black Hills land. All of the deeds have been registered with the Register of Deeds at the courthouse. We have paid for everything that was ours to be responsible for and have sent the drawdown from the lottery fund to the county. It has already been signed by the acting chair at that time, and I believe that you've signed it as well. I was told that if we have that in Raleigh to them by the twenty-eighth of October, that it will be reimbursed this month. So we're waiting for that check to come in, but that will cover all, almost all of the transaction, everything except maybe the legal fees on that. Okay? So that's complete now. Okay?
Good.
School bus wage, Mitch particularly, and all of you were interested in us considering how we might be able to, to help our bus drivers and at the same time entice others to come along. Dennis Jones and Tommy and some others have worked pretty diligently, and we've gone through about three or four different scenarios on this. The one that is coming to you tonight is to provide a certified flat rate for those who are licensed instructors who come out of the classrooms to drive a bus, and then to provide a bonus for those who are hourly employees. Now, there's a reason to consider it that way. There has been concern from our certified instructors, our teachers who are salaried, that they're only getting paid at the base rate or at the hourly rate when others are able to earn time and a half. And that's, that was a concern. They felt that that was, was not fair or equal. And so what Dennis did and others is come up with a flat rate of twenty-three, was it twenty-three fifty or twenty-three?
Twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty? Twenty-two fifty per hour for that. Flat rate, okay? And then, whenever you're talking about an hourly employee, let's, I'm just going to use, for example, I'm going to use a teacher assistant as an, on this. A teacher assistant doesn't have a, a year-to-year-to-year-to-year contract. They are paid on, they're called non-exempt, okay? And whenever they work over the maximum number of hours, they go to time and a half. But whenever you're considering a person who is like a teacher assistant and also a bus driver, there is a moderately complicated formula that you have to use to figure out how much that time and a half is going to be, and then determine how much of that's going to come from the fund source as a teacher assistant and a fund source as a bus driver. Even though they're driving a bus, part of the funding comes out of their teacher assistant fund source, and we don't have any control over that. That is either a state or a federal regulation that we have to follow, okay? Because of that, Mr. Jones and some others have, are strongly suggesting that we go to a bonus system rather than an hourly system above their hourly rate, and that we leave their hourly rate as it is. All right? Now, Dennis, do you want to come and explain any more of that? And then, if you have any questions, this is the time to put them out, in my opinion. Okay?
I guess I'm gonna say, I think this is somewhere to start. Start moving forward.
Go, please.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Thank you.
No, I guess I'm gonna say, I think this is somewhere to start, and it's a good starting point. You know, we're, we're kind of hopefully luring some teachers in with that flat rate pay to come out and start driving a bus, but we're not forgetting about hourly employees by giving them a bonus. That bonus will be attendance-based, so, you know, you got to drive to get the bonus. But again, I think it's somewhere to start as we continue to look and figure out the, the blended overtime formula that they have from the state and how that's going to impact our overall budget so we don't end up with a bunch of money that we don't have. So, that's all I had, sir.
Now, there are, there are other, go ahead, please, Casey.
One question on, on the days missed, like if somebody, if, let's say they know, you know, weeks in advance, hey, I'm not going to be available on December twenty-second or something. Does that count against them as a miss or even if, you know?
Yes, sir. I think a day missed is a day missed. Now then, I think the only thing that we would consider, if we sent you to professional development, then that's on us, and we're not going to punish you for that, but if you're missing a day, you're missing a day.
That's the, that is the recommendation, Casey, okay? Nothing is written in stone at this point.
Yeah. My personal opinion would be to maybe be a little more lenient on that. If they're, if they're giving you advanced notice, it's not quite the same. It's just, hey, I'm not showing up next week and getting called and tell you about it, but, I mean, we've all got busy schedules, so just be mindful of that. That's all I would say.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, you, you said the, the flat rate was twenty-two fifty?
Yes, you might say twenty-three something on yours. As we talked earlier, we kind of pulled that back to twenty-two fifty is what we worked up on the, pretty sure the math on the bottom there, if I'm not mistaken, is based on twenty-two fifty, the bottom line on, well, you don't, you don't have it on yours, but if, if you look at this sheet here, it says sheet five in the left-hand corner, excuse me, right-hand corner for you, and that's the one we used twenty-two fifty to figure out those numbers, come up with the forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars at the bottom there. If you got it on the, I didn't realize you guys had this as well, the talking, Mr. Taylor, the, the talking paper here down here, that's how we came up with this number on the bottom here.
The sheet that I gave you?
Yes, sir.
When you came in.
And Mr. Davis, I'd be interested to hear what your, where that realm is for notifying of a day off, because I think what the policy we have now is, it's, it's very convoluted, maybe not, but you can like miss it for anything and you still get the bonus, and that's what I'm trying to get away from. I need you to be here to drive. I understand we have busy schedules, so I guess I'd like some, some leeway or some, what's your thought processes there are and where, where do we live at to make sure you're not just taking a day off because you're?
I, I think the biggest thing is, is just if they're giving you advanced notice so that we can plan around it, right? I mean, that, that's the biggest part. To, to me, what puts us in a lurch is when we have kind of those, those surprises.
Twenty-four hours prior, there, you know? So, yep.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if somebody, if they give the, give us long notice in advance that they're going to miss, I'd hate to see them be penal, you know, they drove the other twenty days of the month or whatever. It, it would, I don't think it'd be that fair to penalize them in that situation.
Okay.
I mean, at the end of the day, I feel like they're, they're doing us a favor, especially the ones picking up a part-time route.
Yes, and that was, that's another thing I don't think I mentioned, and I don't know if it's in there or not, but we, we also talked about a, because I think our sub-bus drivers really take care of us, so we talked about a sub, I'll have it here, but a sub-bus bonus as well. So if you're, if you're not a full, if you're not driving a full-time morning and afternoon route, or a full-time morning or a full-time afternoon route, then you're a sub-person. So that's based on percentage. If you drive for ten percent, we're gonna give you twenty bucks this month. If you're driving twenty percent, we're gonna give you four. You know, something based on that percentage of what you're driving for is, because they don't, you're right, they've, they've, Eric Stevenson's a prime example, they've taken care of us when we've been hurting for bus drivers, so.
So is twenty-two fifty the lowest anyone would make? I'm gonna make sure I'm understanding all the?
For, for a certified? Go ahead, Tommy.
Because we're not paying bus drivers twenty-two fifty like the, our exempt, unexempt employees, like our teacher assistants. If they were coming in, they're not going to be base rated in that, and when they get their overtime, even after blended race, everyone will be going to be higher, it's going to be twenty-two fifty plus.
Okay. So no, essentially it's going to be less.
So we're, we're keeping only open, there's a few, the employees that we have that are full-time bus drivers make their base rate. I think we got four, five bus drivers that are considered full-time, they make their base rate.
Which might be less than that.
Yes, yes, it'll be less than that twenty-two fifty.
Anybody we have that would be in overtime, it would be that plus. There, there's nobody that make less than the twenty-two fifty.
Does that help you understand?
I think so, yeah. I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I'm understanding all of it. Have we been able to talk to any drivers, maybe like certified staff who hasn't been driving, like I guess did we put any feelers out? See, does this make a difference to them?
Yeah, it has. I've talked to a few, they would, it would entice them more to come out and start driving a bus.
So like essentially we might, will see some response from this?
I think, I think that you will see some. I think it will be limited. This allows us to be a little more competitive, in my opinion, with people who are not necessarily even in the school system, though, because that's, that's another group that we're looking for at this point. You have that sheet that he was talking about, or the explanation of if you drive a certain percentage of a month, as a sub, you receive a bonus also. That's the second sheet. And then, there's a, a fairly detailed spreadsheet on the third page there that's a little bit small to read. I'd be pleased to, to give you a larger copy of that.
Let them borrow your glasses.
Pardon me?
Just let them borrow your glasses.
It won't help, I promise.
That spreadsheet, Mark, that's got all the percentages in the months. Explain that one to me a little bit.
That one right there, the days, the, those are actually days that they drive in the month. Those are student days in that month. So then the percentage is based on those days for that month. So some months may be shorter, and you, you know, you, you have to drive more days to get a higher percentage. Does that make sense?
And this, this is for sub, sub-drivers?
That's for sub-drivers. So those people that step up and help us out, they, that, that's for them. They're not a permanent morning or a permanent afternoon or a permanent morning and afternoon. These are people that we call at the last minute, and they step in and say, yeah, I'll drive a bus for you.
So basically, they, they can earn a range from twenty dollars to two hundred.
Yes, sir.
Based on, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
And then this other one that we had, this is just for people that would be hired in as just a bus driver.
Which one is that one?
I'm not sure that that one is.
That was, to be hon, can I see?
It's just a pay, pay scale chart, it looks like.
Okay, so that one there, when we were initially started talking, that was initial, that's something I'd like to see in the future for pay scale, to pay our bus drivers, something that's more graduated yearly than, than a long period of time where they're making, because right now, from like two to ten or two to twelve, they make the same hourly rate. As we get smarter on how to figure out the overtime, that way we can figure better in the budget what that's going to look like if we go to that two-dollar rate. So I think starting now with the bonus and the teacher flat rate gets us moving in the right direction, but I think long-term, we need to look at a better hourly rate for bus drivers.
Because right now, they come in at fifteen?
At fifteen, yes.
Yeah. And, and the reason, Lisa, that we backed off of that one is because we started looking at the bottom line cost and saw if we go all out, we're going to really, we're going to struggle to find the funding to support all of that. And then when you start adding time and a half, we've got some real issues. And I saw you all looking at some of the?
That's something we may have to go to if we still don't have bus drivers.
At some point, but the question's going to be, Mitch, we're going to find the funds.
But I think if we can, you know, once we, once we get started moving in that direction and working on that and provide you a better picture of what that overtime cost is going to look like, so you have visible, visual of what that's going to look like from money-wise and whether that's going to hurt us in our pocketbook.
If we, if we go all in on everything that we would like to do, we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars additional funding a year, and all of that's going to have to come out of local funding, because we only get X number of dollars from the state for this, and we're already running over budget because they don't give you enough to do everything.
How much does the state give? Is it per hour? Is that what?
No. It's, it's probably more per mile, and if you'll give me a minute, I'll?
The, the state and their, their formulas is ridiculous. I've got the formula in my office, but again, it's very convoluted on how it's based on efficiency and all these different things. So living in a rural area, it's hard to meet their efficiency scale, because if we have a kid that leads, lives on the end and need more, we got to pick that kid up, whereas if you live in a suburban area, your routes are all right there, you're not traveling as far, using as much gas with less kids on the bus. So that, that plays a factor in our, in our figure as well.
How did the bus count weight turn out? Was it?
Oh, it was pretty good. I think we were thirty, right at thirty less than last year. That's not bad in my mind. That's a, that's a small percentage, so we were good on the bus count.
Considering the fact that we had started after school, does that impact your bus numbers? They won't give us any allowance on that. RL, in, in twenty-five, you see twenty-four, twenty-five, we, according to what I have right now, and you correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-four, twenty-five, we were allotted seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, is that correct, from the state? Okay?
This year we're getting eight-hundred-one-thousand.
Yeah. Say that again?
This year we're eight-hundred.
This year, we're up to eight-hundred-and-one-thousand.
Does that cover fifty thousand of your overrun right there?
That, that doesn't, that does, that revenue doesn't meet the cost.
Under, we, I, looking at this sheet, we were projecting an overrun, that fifty thou, I assume our budget was based on seven-fifty, it's going to be eight?
No, our budget was not based on that.
Okay.
Because the cost, the total cost in twenty-four, twenty-five, if you go, but if you go all in, you're looking at one-point-one-million dollars for everything.
Sure.
But that includes everything, including your athletics and all the other pieces. Okay?
And is there different revenue for that, though, too?
That would be impact aid money. That's all, that's the only other?
So we're still working off the same seven-fifty?
Yes.
Three-hundred-one for this year.
For this year, but last year?
For this year, yes.
Factoring in the athletics doesn't necessarily mean that there's also additional income?
No.
Are you even watching this for like yellow bus drivers?
Yes.
Okay.
Of the eight, the eight-oh-one's just for yellow bus drivers, not for active?
That includes everything, bus drivers' maintenance, replacing an engine, all that different stuff, yep. Employees, the, the bus garage employees, all those.
It's all local. All local, yes. We pay, we buy, we buy our own buses, we pay the, our own insurance, pay for the fuel, all of that, that's all local.
Does that, does that eight-oh-one cover the yellow bus cost?
I'm worried about this year because we have to fix that new engine. We'll probably have to cover some of it.
We, we purchased a motor, an engine, put in bus one-fifteen to bring it back up to where it needs to be. So Casey, back to your point, if you take out the fact that athletics is adding to the transportation budget, plus a couple of other things, the increase from last year to this year could help, could help meet that fifty-thousand-dollar overage, depending upon the cost increases of everything else, too, which we don't really know yet.
Yeah, that's all I was getting at, is that we had roughly fifty thousand more than we had per our year.
And when the bus driver pieces that we're talking about right now are only for yellow buses, we're not talking about.
Right.
Although, whenever we raise the wages for somebody for a yellow bus, that's going to impact the wages that we pay on an activity bus also, because it's the same.
And will that continue to go up each year, the, like, will we see that increase again in every year? Just don't know.
Don't know.
Okay.
Because of the way they, the way they, they figure how much money we're running to get.
Yeah.
It depends on lottery ticket sales.
No, it doesn't.
So will we be, will you be looking for us to just make a decision on this?
Well, with, with the conversation that we've had tonight, we're kind of all over the pace, place, and so in order for you all to approve something, I think it needs to be pretty much nailed down. And I don't know that we have that unless you want to make a motion of some sort that would guide us. Okay?
I'll see, I mean, this, this second plan, the one that you showed us here, I'd be fine with, like you said, it's, it's a start, it gets us some action immediately, and if we don't get the It gets us some action immediately, and if we don't get the results, we'll revisit it next time we're here.
Okay, and would you, Casey, in that motion, I know we're not taking motions right now, but would you also like to add a modification of how the budget is earned? You know, we were talking about leave?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. My, I was not using good language on that. Okay? Any other questions about that? So, okay, when, when it comes to that time, I'm going to rely on you all for the motion, all right?
I mean, I hate to put it off. Yeah.
Yeah.
It needs to happen, yeah, I agree.
Okay, this is two strategic plans?
Yes. If, on the, on the screen, and you also have printed copies of this, the problem with your printed copies is that, I was trying to save paper, and so it put it into a .2 font. And I'll, I'll walk you through the different pieces, okay? The first, the first slide is simply the opening to the district strategic plan. And the reason that I have it up there is because over, down at the bottom with the blue, the red, and the green, those are the three highlights that we have put into our strategic plan that come out of the leader and me. And we're trying to, to attack the needs of the school system through an academic component, a leadership component, and then a cultural component as well. Joe, could you have, give me the next slide, because I'm not controlling things? Sure. This is, these are the numbers that I brought to you probably two or three months ago, that are our EOG numbers, and our EOC numbers from last year. And I think that everybody looked at those, and, and everybody has agreed that we, we need to do better than that, okay? And so everything that we have looked at is to target improving that. Joe, can I see the next slide? The, the approach that we are using is to work off of two primary strategies. The first one is that we want to improve our literacy ability, because everything, in testing in particular, and a good, good part of what we achieve in learning is, involves reading, okay? And the, the second piece is, in order for us to overcome the, the core instruction issue that we seem to be having, we need to make sure that in our classrooms, that we are providing the very best instruction that is possible. And I'm going to go back to this statement again, I said it the other night when Superintendent Green was here, and I think I've said it to you all as well. I simply don't believe that our teachers bring less than their A-game every day. Now, sometimes my A-game today may not be my A-game tomorrow, because I may be not well or something. But I really do believe that our teachers bring what they, everything that they can bring. And if that's the case, if they're bringing all that they can bring, then we need to help them improve their skill sets. And so that's how come the second piece that we're focusing on is the coaching initiative. The reason that you only see two strategies up there is, we've learned through some training that we have, that if you have too many goals that you're trying to hit at one time, then you water yourself down so far that you don't get anything accomplished. And so we're focusing on those two, and we're putting most of our weight there, okay? Can I have the next slide? The first thing is to strengthen our core instruction and our literacy, and I want, you can, you can read what's up there, I'm not going to read that to you. But everything that is up there is already in place and working now. Our interventionists and our teachers are receiving more instruction. Our SWAN core has, is being revised, and actually, in the, in the elementary, the middle school, they're pretty much on, on pace with where they want to be, where they believe that we should be with that, and you can read the rest of that. Most, my point about this is, most of these, if not all of these, are already in place and working now, okay? Can I have the next slide, please? Thank you. These are our target goals, I don't want you to think that we aren't trying to improve things without, without the end in mind. And I'll be pleased to get you larger copies of these. All of the numbers that are on here are based off of two assessment systems. One is M-Class, which we are required by the state to use kindergarten through third grade. And above that, we're using iReady as our assessment tool. Why are we not using EOGs and EOCs for that? Because that's autopsy data, that happens at the end of the year. And we need to be able to regulate ourselves and know where we are through the year, so we use these along the way, okay? And you'll see there, there are, there are three red lines, and that's because last year, in fourth grade through eighth grade, we didn't use iReady, we were using a different assessment tool. So we have gone back to iReady for those, and we're basing our targets off of our 23, 24 data, rather than 24, 25. You'll see that there is a 9%, or there should be about a 9% increase from 23, 24 to the end of the year, and then our stretch growth is an 18% increase. I've mentioned those numbers before. Those are not just pulled out of the air, those were provided for us by a technology tool as achievable, particularly the 9%. I believe that the 18% is also achievable. Those are our target numbers for iReady and M-Class. Now, do we trust those numbers against EOGs? There is, I asked Katrina about that this morning, we have, we are 90, about 90% certain that iReady, we can trust it to tell us what's going to happen on EOGs, okay? If you look into some of the literature, there, at correlations, there's a .7 correlation between iReady and EOGs in North Carolina. And .7, when you're talking about correlations, it only goes up to 1, okay? So that's about 70% on that, okay? Those are our targets that we're trusting. Our second is that we will, we will improve our ability to, to coach each other, and that goes all the way from the classroom to the central office, to all different components. And we are investing a significant amount of time and money already in these coaching activities. And we will be tracking that through walkthrough observations by our, by our principals, and also attendance and participation in these. We're not only concerned about academics, we are concerned about the social, emotional health of our students, and also our staff. I don't know if you have heard of the School Health Advisory Council? That's a group of people that we bring in from across the school system, and some from, from the general public as well. And we talk about what do we need to do to help ensure the emotional and the, the physical health of our students. And one of the things that our SHAC group has determined is that we need a policy that will help us ensure that we are providing for SEL support for our staff, not just our students. We don't have a healthy living policy for staff. And so we are developing one now, and I will have that for you in December to look at. The, the difference in a healthy living policy between students and staff is that for students, you can require that they participate, okay? For staff, you can only suggest and try to provide, and that's what you'll see in that policy. The attendance, positive-based attendance initiative is already in place, and our schools are accessing that now. Barbara is helping us develop a morale-boosting process for our staff as well, and we're looking at how we can do that with minimal funds, but maximum impact, okay? Now, the reason that I put this up there is I, I just want you to see that this is just one example of how the district is using the goals that we've been talking about to support the goals that are coming from the schools. And this, this, these are the middle school goals, and we are already focused on helping them achieve growth in what they're doing. This is just an example of that, okay? And one of the things that we were tasked to do, I think East Elementary is next, Joe, is that correct? Yes, it's just more evidence that we're already supporting where they want to go. Now, can I have the next one? This particular slide is, is really interesting to me, because we had to, we are required by the state to place our strategic plans for low-performing schools onto the website, and to give the public an opportunity to respond to those. And we did that last week. We will leave it up, and we will emphasize that we would like to hear more. We had 17 responses from the public. Some of the responses had nothing or very little to do with the strategic plan, it just had some concerns. And that's okay, because now we know what those concerns are, and we can address them. But it, and I kind of know who some of those were, because they, they put their email address in it, it had their name in it. But this one, I don't. And whoever this person is, they looked at one of the plans, and they said, "We see what you're trying to do, and we are so thankful for what you're trying to do, but we have some questions." And so it's our job now to look at these and to determine if we have already addressed some of these, and I think that we have. I think that some of this is just a communication lag. But also, I think that it's important for us to look at this and say, okay, are they bringing points to us that we hadn't considered? And so we're doing that as well, okay? Now, for you as a school board, after this evening, you have the expectation and the opportunity to look at all of these plans again, and to determine for yourself if there you have questions, or if there are things that you would like to see us address in them, much like the public has had. We will share these responses with you, I didn't get those to you today, okay? Can I have the next slide, please, sir? These are the action steps for the district. And you can scan down through there and see that everything that I've already mentioned, we're already putting in place, okay? We didn't put these up because we already had them in place, we have them in place because we put these in as action steps. Can we have the next slide, Joe, please? You'll see that there are individuals on the right who carry the responsibility of making sure that these are carried out. Have the next one, please? And so where do we go from here? The first thing that I'm going to ask for you to do this evening is to go ahead and, and approve the NC Star plans that you have not already approved, all right? And allow us to send those then to the state, because they have to have input as well. And we have to have that to them by December the 1st. But I want you to look at the number four on this, it's very important. Even though you may approve them this evening, that doesn't mean that they are written in stone, these are living, breathing documents. And so I'm going to recommend, based on a conversation that, that you had with us, or began to have with us at the October meeting, that we set a time soon, as a group, to sit down and to talk about what is formative assessment? How does that apply to summative assessment? Why are we doing what we're doing? To ask questions. What's the difference in M-Class, iReady, and check-ins? Because that was a big point of conversation last time, right, Cody? Okay? And then, if there are adjustments to, particularly the district plan, then we consider those. And if you have questions for the elementary schools, or the, that we put those questions in front of their staff, and let them address them, okay? That allows us to have a living, breathing document, rather than something that we've had in the past, which is a strategic plan that's gone on the shelf, and we didn't look at it again until next year, all right? I'm really excited about the fact that it becomes active this way. So my request would be that you approve our district and our school NC Star plans, and then we set a time to sit down and talk some more, as much as you want, okay? All right? Any questions about any of this, or any thoughts?
Mark, there's one thing on the action report. If you're turning this in, I think it's probably a typo with the AO5 on the second page.
Yes.
You got March, March 6, 2025, I think it's supposed to be 2026.
I think you're right, since that date's already gone past. Thank you for catching that, RL. We will adjust that before we turn that in, okay?
And how, how often do y'all go back, or how often do we go back and look at, are we, are we on track? Do we do that quarterly, or?
We, we have been doing it quarterly. However, we're going to start putting this into our principal and our central office meetings every month, and talking about how we're moving forward with these. Yes, sir. And one of my intents, RL, is every three months, two or three months, to come back and to report to you all, this is what we're seeing, and this is what we're doing, okay? If you want me to come back every month, I'll be happy to do that. I know that in, in, I think it's Transylvania County, every month, they report on their strategic plan and what they're doing, and I'm good with that. Whatever y'all want.
I mean, how often do you do the assessments?
We do that three times, three times a year, they just completed their beginning of the year, and then they'll look at middle of the year, probably in January, February, am I correct?
December.
And then they look again in March, April.
I'd like to see that for the assessments.
I think that's wise, because then you have current data to compare. We can do that. When we get those numbers, we'll come back and report again, okay?
We, we also talked about trying to shift a little bit from like so much of the screen time and learning from the devices to more, you know, conventional, getting back to teachers, teaching from a pen and paper style, right? Is that implemented yet?
I know that some of the principals have already implemented that approach, okay? And I think the best thing to do would be to, to let them speak to that, and, and if you want them to do that tonight, I'm good with that, because, you know, they're pretty articulate folks.
If anyone's got anything to comment on that yet?
I know that Mike already has, because, because Mike believes in eyeball-to-eyeball instruction, don't you? Well, that's just who you are, and that's good.
That's accurate, but I haven't been following into the topic with you tonight. What I would say about that is, when we talked about our school improvement plan, we talked about utilization of our resources, we talked about the folks in the building. That was how we were going to get to less screen time, more shoulder-to-shoulder destruction, eyeball-to-eyeball. Of course, what seems to catch us lately is the whole, and I'm not opening up a can of worms by any means about our subsituation, but we don't get a lot of substitute teachers, so if somebody's out, those folks that are our interventionists, that are coming in doing our small group intervention stuff, they get pulled off to cover a class, to take this, to do that. So that has been an impact there. Teacher-wise, they, they have really embraced the intervention piece of the whole shoulder-to-shoulder. We do our whole group instruction, everything's still going to be built around a SMARTboard, the, the big piece of a presentation. But when they break up and they start a teacher table, or they start what I call them intervention groups, they don't necessarily call them that. But anytime if I pull you five away from the rest of these folks, and we're working specifically on your skill, that's an intervention group to me. They are doing that with intentionality, and, and I'm really, I'm really pleased with that. We, we're seeing really nice growth in our three, four, five, as we're doing our check-in stuff right now. I was just looking at some of that with a fourth grade teacher today, and she's over the moon with her, her growth numbers. I would love for her to come and talk to you about that. She's a brand-new teacher, and I, I say, why are you so, you're so surprised? You've been doing a great job, you beat your brains out trying to, to figure out and do, and she said, well, I just didn't think I was a very good teacher. I said, you're a brand-new teacher, that just, that doesn't mean you're not very good, it's because you're brand-new. You know, there's a learning curve with everything we're doing. But as far as the screen time itself, we do still have, we, we still use the, the programs in place. We are trying to use them appropriately and not exceed the recommendation. I would love to tell you that I'm there monitoring that, but I don't, not, not just thumb on the, you know. We, we spend our time in conversation and expectation, and they all buy into that. But to be fair to you, our, our students are well behind. You know, you've looked at the numbers. So, and I know we're broadcasted, but it should not surprise anybody in our district where our students stand in their performance data. I don't want that to shock anybody, we've had lots of parent conversations. We've had lots of parent conversations with that very thing. As we changed our grading scale, that was eye-opening for some of our parents. Because folks my age, they don't understand standards-based grading, but they understand what a fifty looks like on a report card. So that has been a, a boon for us in increasing parental conversation and interaction. And our teachers have done a great job in explaining not only the where we're at and the where we're wanting to be, but what we're doing to get in, to make that happen. It's not been easy conversations, of course, but it has been fruitful. So I think that's a long way around for the answer, wasn't it? But that's where we're at. And it is, it, I think, as RL said, if we come in and do some update, I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised. I would hope that I'm not the only one doing the update because I would love to bring some teacher leaders and if I can encourage them to. They're not always a real confident lot in standing up and talking to y'all, which kills me because they do a great job. They, they work themselves to death for the betterment of our kids. So I would love for them to come and present that growth data as I, I referenced Ms. Smuck's number. I would love for her to come share that, but.
I, I, I think in our conversations that we, that we set up here from number three, that we have our teachers come in as well. Yeah? We were saying we were going to do that and we ran into some complications with time, but if you're, rather than just listening to our admin, let's listen to our teachers too. They're going to bring some real insight for everybody, okay?
Just a quick update from the middle school. I, kind of going off of what Mr. Tredway said about, you know, we have the online programs that we have to do that, that the, the students are required to do each week. But one of the biggest things that we're seeing at the middle school is we've implemented weekly assessments with our students on the standards that are being taught each week. And so every Friday, the students are going to get some sort of little assessment on how well they did. If they didn't show proficiency on it, the next week, those teachers are following up with them to give those interventions that they need. Another thing that we completed on Friday's PLC day was for the first quarter, first nine weeks, was a documentation of all the standards that have been taught in each of the subject areas. And that's something that we'll update. It's an ongoing record. That way teachers can see, "I've taught this. This is how well my students did on that. I know I've got to come back to this." If it was a standard or a, a section that wasn't the best outcome that we wanted. So I'm really excited about that. And it was, it was some eye-opening conversations on Friday. It's like, oh, when you actually are sitting down and you're looking through each individual standard and seeing those, those results, it does create that sense of urgency for you. So very excited about that. Ms. Heron, at the middle school, she helped us create that. And so she's been instrumental in helping that process. So very excited about that. And our teachers are, they're working hard to do the very best that they can for our students. So seeing lots of, of really good results. One thing that we've leaned into heavily is, is our, our staff and who's, who's doing the interventions. We've got lots of, uh, we've got a couple retired teachers that are coming back to support our students and our teachers, as well as some new folks that have come on. So lots of really good things happening at the middle school. We will take our check-ins this week, kind of for the first quarter. So we'll have that data and then we'll have our mid-years in January. So very excited to see some of the growth and we're already seeing some significant growth in those areas, so.
Did you use I-Ready, uh, BOY?
We used I-Ready for our beginning-of-year diagnostic testing. That kind of gives us a baseline for where our students are at. Now, I can share with you those percentages later, but that gives us a good foundation. So we usually, we take those in January and that'll give us a, a good picture of, "Okay, this is where we have to hit really hard these last, you know, couple ni-" or eighteen weeks of the school year. And it's very interesting because I, just because I was doing the math. We only have twenty-nine days left in the semester, school days.
Can you believe that? You turn around and it's gone.
So twenty-nine school days in the first semester and it'll go by just like that, so. Well, we've talked about time before. We don't have, we don't have all the time in the world, so that's why we have to have that sense of urgency. So I shared that with the, the students today and they all cheered, so. But it is, it, it has created that urgency for us at the middle school of we have to be intentional with our time. So I think we're doing that very well right now, so I'm excited to see where that goes.
Questions for?
Just to ask you, Mr. McManahan, how are you using those interventions? Is it one-on-one or small groups?
Very small groups. So like for, for example, today, I had a retired teacher. She, she comes in and she, she, she plans with the, for example, for math department today. She would plan with one math department, "All right, here are our students that need that intervention." She'll be able to pull those groups. So essentially, it creates multiple small groups when you're, when you're pulling students between all the, all the staff in there. So that's what I've enjoyed the most. For an example, we have a, a reading program and it's an, it's called extreme reading. There's one core in the day where I have students being intervened with on that level for the extreme reading portion. I've got students that are receiving their services and then I've got other students that are, they're able to be co-taught by both the ELA teachers. So we've got lots of things. We've been really strategic about breaking those, those classrooms down to be able to have those small group settings. And that's been, that's been really awesome to see. Implementing more time with the teacher, teacher-table type things, trying to have as much co-teaching opportunities as possible. We do a really good job of that and, and just highlighting seventh grade math. Ms. Edding does a wonderful job with that. With Ms. Schuler, they co-teach to that. That gives an opportunity for Ms. Edding to pull students one-on-one. And that's been huge and her results speak for themselves, so. Again, trying to get as many of those opportunities throughout the school as possible. And I, and we've done that. We've done a lot more than we have in years past, so. Another thing, another point to, as far as data, we utilize EVOX projections a lot. And that's basically gives a projection of what the student will do on the end-of-grade test. So we're already looking at those things and being able to help students that, that, you know, can, can pass those EOGs. And that's not the, that's not the end-all, be-all of everything, but if we can help them be successful on those, we're going to. So that's just another point of data that we use.
Thank you for, I'd forgotten all about EVOX. It's true.
I'm lucky, Cat. I've got this guy right here with me. This is Carter Chapman, okay? Carter, can you tell this group of people? And I, I put him on the spot and he was like, "So this is hard for a kid. So you guys are scary enough for us, but you're really scary to him." So they scare me too, Carter, it's okay. Can you tell them what originally your fourth grade class, he's a Ms. Barrows class, what your goal was for AR as a class? Do you remember what that was? Okay.
Our goal originally was four hundred fifty-eight by November fourteenth. And we already passed that. We have four hundred fifty-six, I think, right now.
What's your new goal?
Our new goal is six hundred by December something.
Six hundred what, if I may ask?
Six, just six hundred on the dot.
Six hundred points.
Okay.
It's AR. So can you tell them how many points you have as a average?
I have ninety-seven point four.
How much more are you reading now, do you think?
A lot.
So, so how, how do they earn these points, Lisa?
You want to tell them?
You have to read a book and finish it. Then you have to take a test on it and depending on what you get on the score is how many AR points you get.
So just, I'm, because sometimes they don't understand what we're talking about. So let's say you were reading a Harry Potter book. That's about a fifth, sixth grade level book. You're going to get more points for that, right? Because it's, some of them are, takes a bit longer to read. So the bigger your book is, the higher level your book is, the more points you get. So this young man has already exceeded his goal that he has set for himself and so has his class and they are. Would you say that your fourth grade group is a little bit competitive? Little bit, yeah, I think so. Thank you. Do you have anything else you want to tell them about AR?
Carter, what do you get? What's the incentive there? What do you get your points?
What did?
What, what do you give a reward for?
Teach you the rules.
Hmm?
What did your class get the other night? Because your class had the most points.
Oh, uh.
We're going to party.
Oh, yeah. And whenever we reach our goal, she puts them in like a hat and pulls out a thing, a name, and whoever class gets pulled, you get a prize, like a pizza party or something.
Kind of what that was. They wanted a pizza party, so they got a pizza party. And then, okay, so did I cheat? How do you, how did you know I didn't cheat?
Because you put names in a hat, the equal amount of names in a hat, and then you didn't look and pulled out a name.
And I did it on morning announcements live, right? Okay, so.
Tell them to beat your goal, you get two names in a hat.
Ooh. That's it, darn it. So we present, this is AR at its finest. That group is like, okay, our fourth grade group, our reading scores last year, you don't have to look very far to know that they weren't what you would want. And this fourth grade group this year is crushing it. They are so competitive. They are just reaching for the stars and I'm excited about that. They're excited about reading. They're reading in the gym, waiting on parent pickup to come in. They're reading. I've taken pictures of them walking down the hall, reading. He brought a book in tonight, was reading in the elevator. It's an example of, sure, you get a prize. Is that wrong? I don't think so. Why do football teams play football? Because they want that ring, you know? Is it wrong? I don't think so. So we're, we're pumping them up. We're, and we put it before our student lighthouse team is if you met your goals for I-Ready, for AR in class, what would be prizes you want? We were expecting, like, I was expecting skating parties or movies and those were, were, those were some of the answers. But our kids gave the most simplistic answers. They wanted a piece of candy or a little squishy toy or, you know? And it just kind of broke my heart a little bit because I thought, bless their hearts, they're so sweet. When we think they're wanting something major, they just want a little bit and get recognition. And I'm so thankful for that. And that's paper. They're reading, but they've got books in their hands and they're reading them. So that is our connection to paper. We're still, just like Mike and, and Ron talked, I don't need to, to beat that horse. You know, some of our stuff's still going to be on the computer. I-Ready is, it's on the computer. For our littles, the Boost, it's, it's on the computer. But when you do those interventions and when you pull those groups of kids out, most of the time you've got cards with words on them, with letter sounds, with numbers, and you're doing not more, I don't think, than five or six kids at a time and you're sitting there and you're looking at, "Okay, what's the sound, RL? Can you tell me that? No, that's not right." You know, "Cody, can you help?" You know, and so you're working as a group and, and I don't ever see them making fun of anybody when they don't get it right. They're wanting, they're wanting their friend to get that answer too. And so that's, you know, that's important. I think that's builds a, a community of kids that want to build each other and not tear each other down. And not only do I want my test scores to shine, but I want my kids to shine as people, not just on a scoreboard of where do we fit on the state. Our check-ins, I will have to say, Julie Bennett's rocking some math, let me tell you. She's already at sixty-seven percent with one of her groups and I was like, "Yes, Lord, thank you." Had a third grade teacher and this is, this is the difference. She's brand-new in third grade and she got her check-in scores and she cried. She wept, actually. And I met with her today and I said, "How are you today?" She said, "I felt like it was a grieving process." She said, "I was killed." She said, "I was absolutely killed when I saw my scores." And she said, "I got mad." And she said, "I was like, 'What in the world?'" And I said, "Okay, I'm going to tell you." I went, you guys are smarter than me, so. I went to third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade and I pulled out some math tests that those kids had got, questions they got wrong. And I was doing them quick, like, "Read it, do it." I got some wrong. Why? Because I wasn't focused. I wasn't rereading it as my teacher tells me all the time. I wasn't working it out because I thought, "Oh, I know what they're asking." No, you don't. You need to work it out. So that's where your paper comes in. And my teachers are real strategic in that. They want their paper when they're taking the test. They want it numbered and they want to see that math problem. Reading's harder. You can't write down number one and write down all the things for the main idea. But, you know, reread it. But we're trying to teach them those strategies that will help them. You got any questions?
Eric, you want to speak to the, the screen time in the high school? This is where it becomes pretty difficult and not because of cell phones, but a lot of the instruction that's happening involves a screen.
Yeah, we, uh, we don't have I-Ready and all that like elementary and middle, but we have started iXL this year for our math classes and that's just a supplement to what we're already doing in the classroom. We're still very pencil-paper based. Now, of course, they'll use Google Classroom to help present some of the material. We've got screens and stuff like that up in the classroom, but it is a lot of paper, pencil. With our English classes, today I saw some of them critiquing each other's papers, small groups, just going around, starting with a paragraph and making sure sentence structure and everything's good on it. And then each partner had kind of their own critique of the paper. So, and as well, something similar, kind of crossing over with our history classes so that way they can kind of cross, collaborate on that because a lot of reading is in history. Then our science classes lately, a lot of project-based and they're having a pull from older science books and material off, uh, online, but still making sure that we're staying up to date through online articles. I mean, we, we do have some biology books that are a little bit dated, but still trying to get back to that paper, pencil concept instead of just putting them in a, another class with another Chromebook screen, so. But we had our Math One check-ins. They were a little bit lower than what we were hoping, but also we have five more weeks to help facilitate some of that process as well, so. Any questions?
So I think you hear that there, there's a, there's an effort to reduce the screen time, but the fact of the matter is that there was always going to be some because that's, that's the day we live in too. But a good balance is happening. I hope you, I hope you heard some of what you wanted to hear, okay? Any other thoughts or questions?
I just think it's great. I think we're on the right track. I, I appreciate their, their work on that and all the effort they're putting into it. I think it's going to pay off. Good, good to see that everything's going on. I think it's the right direction.
Well, if, if it doesn't pay off, you know, exactly the way that everybody's looking for it to, it's not from a lack of trying, you know? Lot of effort going into things right now, a lot of effort. So that's all the strategic plan piece that I have, unless there's anything else from you all that you want to talk about. We have had conversation about board policies, particularly the wireless policy, remember? And, and I went back, it's Policy forty-three eighteen, and I provided for you in your board packet and/or online a new version of the paragraph, RL, that we were talking about that was creating a little bit of distress for our principals, for some of our principals. So I rewrote it so that it's a little more free to follow their handbook but still has a consequence, not after three times, but two, all right? So that even tightened up a little bit. And we rewrote it so that there's a sentence that says, "A second offense will be considered severe and will result in disciplinary, disciplinary action according to the student handbook that may include bans on bringing personal wireless devices and short-term suspensions." And I sent that to both of the admin at the middle school, both of the admin at the high school, and they're good with that. Those are the places where we would have the greater issues, okay?
Yeah, I, I like it. I like, I like this fine call.
Okay, all right?
Self.
All right, so I, I would ask, unless you all have more questions or a concern, that you approve four to three eighteen tonight, okay? All right? I provided for you another policy that is in construction right now that has to do with- another policy that is in construction right now, that has to do with, um, outside private therapy providers. Uh, that's one of the things that I handed out. And, and here's, here's the concern. Um, w- we have people who we contract with to provide occupational therapy. Uh, we have people that we contract with if we need, or at least we have memorandums of understanding with, to provide behavioral services if they're needed outside of our school system, if they're needed outside of our school system. However, we also have parents sometimes who are providing a private pay service for their child. And we have had some ask if they can have those private pay services provide the therapy for the student during the school day on our campus. Okay? That provide, that, that presents some concerns, all right? First of all, one of the concerns is, they're receiving payment for that, they're billing insurance, they're, or, or Medicaid or whomever, and we're not. They want to use our facilities to run their business at times, and I have a little bit of a problem with that. I also have a little bit of a problem with the fact that we're talking about confidential services, that I can't always guarantee in a confidential area. Plus, I have students who, who are not part of those services, who need confidentiality also, who, who may not need to be seen by the public. You know, that, we, we have students who, who are in foster care, who have come out of difficult situations, and not everybody in the world needs to know that they're in our school system. You underst, you understand where I'm coming from on that? And so, it's difficult to maintain that level of confidentiality when you're bringing outside services in. You can't guarantee that. Um, it also, whenever you, whenever you have a student who needs a private therapy of some sort, that's going to compete with the educational services that we are charged to provide for them anyhow. When are you gonna do that? During PE? Are you gonna do that during their, during English or language arts? When do you do that? This, it just brings in a, a whole realm of concern. So, Lisa Waldroo, uh, started talking to me about this two or three months ago, and said, we really need a policy. So, um, we went, uh, we searched for policies across different school systems while reinvent the wheel. And, uh, we found one from Craven County. Matter of fact, they're, they're pretty tough to find, aren't they, Lisa? And I sent it to our, our attorneys, and our attorney said that this policy will work. It will work. However, they also said we need to be careful of a couple of things. Um, so, Lisa, would you like to come and speak to any of this? Because you're the expert in the area, although I've done a whole lot of talking already.
So, I guess, do you guys have questions about any of this? Um, the other piece is that he did not say that it affects, was like, students attendance, which you mentioned. If you pull them out, then they're missing something in there. And then, um, liability issues. You know, what are they doing at our school? What if the kid gets hurt during that time period? Um, and then, I guess my big thing is, what is this company doing that's clinically based that we can't do educationally based? Or what are we doing educationally that they're not doing? You know what I'm saying? So, to me, it's kind of a conflict. Um, but I know that there are parents who, who need, who feel like they need these services. Um, but I don't know if they're educationally relevant. They could be clinically relevant, and that's a completely different thing than if it's educationally relevant. So, do you guys have questions?
Well, is, is our policy gonna stop them from getting anything? That, like, say, a parent's looking to get a form of treatment, we're just saying, hey, you know, I'm gonna do it at our facility. You can do it forever, when you're on time.
They, they, on their own time, and that's what this policy says. It can happen at, you know, after school. That, we can't stop parents from providing services for their kids, just where that happens.
Sure.
The other thing that we have to be careful, just being an old speech path, is if the child's actually Medicaid, and we bill Medicaid, that provider can't bill Medicaid same day we bill Medicaid. So, that, that sort of thing, we have to be careful with.
Now, there's some other, some other, I would call them private pay perhaps, but at, at the very least, they may be, um, nonprofit, who, we have used, for example, uh, pay setters. We've used, we've, we've used them at the middle school in the past, and they provide a service that is similar to this. Um, but I believe that we could look at them with that provision, and as long as we stay within some guidelines, that it's not going to impinge upon the educational opportunities of the student, okay? That we could work an MOU out with them so that they could serve. But those need to be, uh, fewer and far between. I'm, I'm talking about individual counseling services or, or, or therapy services of some, for students individually, okay?
And we definitely need to make sure we have MOU.
Yes.
Um, with them. That's just that memorandum of, of, uh, understanding, so.
You, you mentioned finding a policy was a little bit difficult. So, what is, what is kind of the norm on this in, uh, you know, throughout the school system?
From what, from what I am gathering, Casey, the norm is, there's no policy.
Most people just don't have one.
They, and, but I also know that, uh, the school system that I have spoken to, and I haven't spoken to a lot on this one, okay? Um, they're not allowing people to come in.
They're either really strict, or they're kind of in the middle, or they're, there's no policy at all.
So, you're suggesting this be our policy?
I suggest this be our policy. Um, I suggest that, uh, that, uh, we, we not allow private pay to come in during school time. I think that it creates too many problems for us. However, I don't want to close down the opportunity for, for, um, some organizations like pay setters, if we want to use them, um, on a, on a larger basis for groups. Um, but they need to have some kind of a, of a guarantee of what they're gonna do. Um, we need to have a, an agreement with them, and they, we also need to ensure that they're following the right regulations, uh, for background checks and all of those pieces, too.
It seems like you got that in life paragraphs.
Yes. Yes. I would ask you tonight, I'm not asking you to approve this tonight. I'm asking you to think about it, okay? Um, and if you have more questions, then, then let us help dig for answers with you, okay?
Not too long ago, we did approve something, didn't we, for mental health, um, online?
It was a grant.
Through a grant?
Blue Ridge.
Uh, Blue Ridge, but.
She stepped down.
I was thinking there was something else that it was, there was a different name.
Cartwell.
Cartwell.
Cartwell. Which is something like, we have like, said, hey, we need your services.
Right.
Which would be similar to like, what we do, Western Carolina University's speech and hearing services. We use their speech pathologists at the, um, pre-k. So, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, we can't provide that, so we would contract that out, or use that.
There was an element of it where people could, uh, do like, online visits if a parent. So, no, so I guess what I'm saying is, like, that could kind of cover some of this anyway. Like, we do offer other things.
Yes.
Already.
Yes.
It's not that we're not, don't have anything in place of that.
We still do it probably, just not during school hours on our premises, unless, um, well, one thing, and you said, like, if we're doing a, hold my IUP meeting or a five oh one team meeting, you know, they can be involved in that.
Yes, they can. But I, I like the way that you said that, though. If it's something that we aren't providing, that that's a different world to me. Uh, we can't provide that level of intensive counseling. We just don't have the people. But if we can provide it, then we, we ought to be the go-to on that for our campuses, in my opinion. Okay? So, I'll, again, ask you to think about this. We're gonna, I'm gonna send this back to our lawyer. We're gonna talk about it some more, and make sure that we're within the boundaries of everything that we need. And I would, will ask, probably ask for you to approve something if we can in December on that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I gave to you a little while ago, a, a request for Article forty-six. Um, this was, is a little bit fresh, and you don't have to take any action on this tonight if you don't want to. I think it's a good time for us to discuss it. We have some, some fairly large, uh, cost items that we need to pay for. Um, as you can see, in, in what I gave to you, we need to replace a diesel motor in a, in a flatbed truck that has a dump capacity. RL, you said, you, you could, uh, put s- stakes or something on the side. This actually has drop-down sides.
Okay.
Already. I didn't, I didn't remember that. The motor that's in it is a six-point-oh diesel. Um, we're, we're looking at replacing it with a, the same type of motor. However, it, um, six-point-oh diesels, uh, Tommy told me, have a tendency to not always be strong in every area. And so, this will be reinforced with a three-year, thirty-six thousand mile warranty.
Are you putting a six-oh back in it?
We have to, uh, what we're gonna do, a lot of those can't support. This will be head-stated, and it should have any more, any more trouble with heads. And if we do, we have to work to get that replaced somewhere. Yes, really, when you think about that, I looked at a couple of trucks once, and we liked that one. If we did replace it, then we'd be well into it anyways, to replace it. And we don't, with other needs, we don't have the money to do that. So, it's, it's like a better chance.
So, that six-oh would be, I know they used to call it bulletproof or something.
Yeah, that's what it is.
The, another piece that I didn't explain in here, and I should have, is, we have to have something of that capacity, that size, that weight, to pull the trailer that, that has our, um, mowers on it. And our dump truck, um, is, is struggling for that now. Um, we, we've got to have something we can rely on for that. And this would allow us to have that, okay? Um, we have been wanting for a long time to put a softball batting cage up at the high school, um, because they're having to share the batting cage that's up there. Uh, Tommy has put together an estimate of twenty-five thousand dollars. The maintenance team would be installing that. Um, we had previously allotted capital funds, uh, for that project. However, whenever the opportunity for the robotic paint machine came along, uh, we dropped this batting cage to purchase the paint machine because it provides a higher value, um, to, to the athletic program. Um, I know that you all have some thoughts and some concerns about, about this, and I'd, I'd love for you to share them, if you want to.
Relative to the batting cage, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind seeing if we can reach out to the public for donations or, or construction help on that, just to, just to check in.
Okay.
What's the big cost on that batting cage?
Tommy?
Probably the net.
The net, I think the, um.
Is it gonna be open or closed?
Open, but we still have to put a slab in it, which is gonna be considered expensive, plus the, um, carpet. We need to put down.
Where it would be, pretty much likely open. We have down there, we won't have to compete for time. So, we won't have to use two different sets of teams, because now we'll have the middle school and the high school, because middle school is JV now, that we have there, so we'll have that much more traffic. So, we feel like this is the time with those changes, that we'll need more facilities, be able to get practice, uh, and not have to share those, those spaces.
Do you think we need to rehab that other one, too? I know the floor is bad, I know the net's bad.
We need, we're gonna have to recock it some of that, we're gonna do some of that. We also already have, uh, ordered the new screen.
Where's this one going to go, Tommy?
Plan is behind the left field wall, behind the left field fence at the softball field. Where we'd like to put it is right there, that, that's two pieces of, right there, what we can, and remind you right now.
There we go. Go ahead.
I interrupted somebody.
Oh, I just was gonna ask if we, we're gonna have, I hope to have this done by, like, this, by February, March? Like, is that what we're looking for? Yeah.
We get the budget, and then we go ahead and get started on that. The first, the first order is, is when they get, say, every week, we can go ahead and get us a slab down, because concrete floor, that is a much weighted, so get that down as fast as we can, and then, uh, get our stuff together, where we're stressed as we want.
I, I know we've had issues with the fields being ready before. This wouldn't come before getting the fields ready, would it?
The fields, the fields are actually ahead of where they've been, been quite some time. Um, at least that's, the field I get from looking down from above, I'm not more than content walking down there, checking out more to see. But I, I think we're in a better place than where we have been in times past, in March. We got dug out working things to do. Got down there working on some of the stuff on the baseball softball, dug out some paint again. Got some, uh, roofing issues to address, and we'll take care of some of that. That's some of the stuff that we're already gonna work on.
Could we borrow funds from somewhere else and then re, and then reimburse ourselves through this, so that we can go ahead and get materials?
I think that we would do that, but we don't know that that's coming.
Okay.
Not sure where.
Okay. I would like for us to be able to go ahead and get the materials, and get started, rather than waiting for, because this will have to go through two sessions. If, if you approve this, and, and I take it to the, when I take it to the commissioners, it's gonna have to go through two sessions with them. They'll wanna think, look at it, talk about it, and then vote on it, I know them. Okay? And I don't, I don't wanna delay. I don't, I want to get this moving. So, I think that one of the things that we need to look at is, how can we go ahead and get that funded, if we can, and then reimburse ourselves through this? Um, that way, we can ensure that we can have this done quickly.
And to echo what Casey said, sometimes, community members want to step up and, you know, help out in situations like this. And I think this would be, if there's anybody out there that wanted help with time or material, this would be a good, a good time to accept it.
Well, all, all they need to do, and, and we'll put, we'll put appeals out for that. We'd be happy to. But all they need to do is to reach out to Tommy, or, uh, one of the softball coaches or myself, and, and we'll put that in action, okay? We're not gonna turn down good help. Okay? Um, garage door replacement, we have ordered the door for the, uh, the weights center up there, the wrestling building. Uh, we thought we had all of the funding for the others. Apparently, that was supposed to be Article forty-six already. We need fifteen thousand dollars to replace all of the other garage doors that are not functioning well. Uh, that's in here. And then, the big cost, big ticket item is, uh, moving forward with replacing, uh, the lights at the Performing Arts Center on stage. This is a three-phase project. Um, and, um, I think the explanation i- is, is fairly good there on the page, but in order for us to, uh, replace the current system, it's going to take an infrastructure overhaul. And the nice thing about the overhaul that we're talking about is, it is backwards compatible, so that the lights that we have in there now will still work with the new system. And then, as we move forward into the project over the next several years, you can move those lights out and put new lights in, one at a time or two at a time. The, the wonderful thing about this is, in my opinion, and, uh, forgive me for using that word, but I think it's wonderful, is that we're taking hot lights out that take bulbs, and can only house one color, and once you set them, they have to stay set until you climb on a ladder and reset them. We can put lights up that are LED, that you can change the colors automatically, and you can rotate them, okay? It's just, this is the place that we need to be in our lighting system on the stage. The other thing is, the light board that we have is thirty years old, and you cannot replace it. So, if anything happens, we're sunk, okay? This allows us to move into what should be the twenty-first century. Right now, we're still before the turn of the century with everything, okay? I know that it's expensive. Um, but I will tell you, whenever I started thinking about changing the light systems at the Performing Arts Center, the number that came to me was three hundred thousand dollars to do it. This takes it down to around a hundred and fifty thousand total, in stages, which is what I like also. If you have any questions, there's the man to answer, I mean, to answer, because he's the expert on this, okay? Any questions about any of that or concerns?
Well, I think back to the, the garage door replacement, I would like to mention one thing. Tommy and I have talked about this several times, is, um, of course, we're gonna replace those and get them back brand new. So, number one, let's take care of what we got.
Sure.
And I know we have open conversations, but also, when it gets damaged, you know, it's nice to communicate that it's not working, and we need to, you know, that we know and that we are aware of it. So, because I know, like, for instance, the garage door, it's, I know we got three of it, but the, uh, filled out from the multipurpose building. There's a lot of people that access those buildings, and it's not, it's not just one entity.
It's true.
So, anyway, just something I've seen, and I think if we're gonna take care of them and put them back correctly and in good working order, then, uh, we need due diligence and try to keep them that way.
Okay.
And have that communication with the people.
I think that's what you mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Take care of what we got, alright? Agree. Any other thoughts on any of that? I would ask that you would approve that this evening if you would please. And, and like I said, Casey, if, if people make donations to this, just because we are requesting the drawdown doesn't mean we have to draw it down.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We just have the freedom to do that. Um, update on water and sewer, I have, there are three emails that you have there. Um, there is still work to be done on that. Um, if, if, uh, you were looking for a price tag on some of this, uh, from TJ Hollings, I think is his last name, out from Vanoy, a real quick estimate of some of this was a million dollars, not including the tank. The tank has to be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand gallons. Don't have a cost on that, what that would, what that would be. Um, you have to ask the question, if we're going to go in that direction, would it be wiser to, and I'm just putting this out as a question, would it be wiser for us to become self-sufficient or would it be wiser to become partners with the county and put that money in with them? Um, now, I think that, this is my opinion, I think that there needs to be a conversation with the other two entities and it needs to be put on the table. This is where we are. Um, and I know from some of the conversations that I have heard that our commissioners are very open to doing that right now. And I think also the alderman would be willing to do that too. Uh, I know that the alderman feel that they are doing all that they can, okay? Um, financially. So I've, I've given you the information that I've gotten. The numbers are still a little sketchy, RL, um, and is a concern.
But, but it gives us a good estimate and I agree with you. I think this gives us, hey, this is what it would cost us to be self-sufficient, you wanna come in with us and help the whole county, the whole town, you know? Be my fault.
I mean, we're, we're getting, we've got a, a pretty nice gift horse in fifty-two million dollars, haven't we? And even if, and, and I, I know the public's not gonna wanna hear this, I don't really care too much, alright? If we've got fifty-two million dollars sitting there to provide a facility that's gonna last for seventy years, then putting a little more in is not a bad ask. So if it took three or four or five million dollars and we had to help that happen, that's not a bad thing. Okay? I'm not saying that the, the school system ought to pay for all of it, I don't mean that. But surely to goodness, we can come up with a solution on this. That's always been my philosophy with this. We can solve these problems. I'm the optimist though. Okay? Any thoughts or questions you wanna put out about that?
No, I'm good on that.
Okay.
I did wanna go back to the, the lighting upgrades.
Yes.
So that's, that's about a hundred and twenty grand over three years, right?
Yes.
And, and how, you, are, are we kind of in dire straits with that? I mean, is it?
No.
We're, we're limping along there?
We're, we're, Joe, why don't you come up and talk about that?
I don't know what you all got.
You got something like?
You got something?
Yeah, we got a couple of things.
Thank you. Of course, now I can't remember if I switched the cameras.
I was hoping I'd be wearing one of my sneakers.
Okay, so the question was, how dire is the situation? Um, let's just say our system is very vulnerable to electrical brownouts. Um, we have had situations in the past where literally before the night of an opening show of a musical, the lighting system shut down and I had to spend eight hours on the phone to ETC, which is a company that originally made our system.
Yeah.
Um, and fortunately, they still support it, so we do have that, they do still support it. But the system, the way it is now, is literally twenty years out of date.
Sure.
Nothing is, you know, like if, if a component goes down, there's no replacement for it. So it's either we buy it now or we buy it as a, an emergency.
Understood. So, so when we host events and things there, generate revenue from that facility, does any of that, where do those funds go and does any of that kinda get routed back into paying for something like this?
So we make very little, actually. Um, when I, when I host, uh, community events, like concerts and things like that, um, those are usually paid for by grants.
Yeah.
And the attendance is, to be honest, not been amazing.
Alright.
You know, fifty people, eighty people. Um, so I use that, I, so basically the income as far as what we're earning, uh, for example, if, if, uh, if a teacher provides, like, uh, Ms. Lewis provides a concert and she collects gate, she keeps all that. So none of that goes into the art center. Um, so I guess the, the short answer is a very mystical amount. That does go into a fund and that does go into, like, I use it to purchase the light bulbs, the gels and, but, but we fund as far as the school district, you all fund the lion's share of the expense of running the facility.
But it wouldn't be a bad, in my opinion, Casey, it wouldn't be a, a bad discussion to talk about whenever there is a revenue generating event, that a percentage of that go back to the maintenance and care of the facility, you know?
Yeah, and, and I mean, my, my reason for the ask, where, where my brain was going on that is, you know, thinking about fairness to other, I'll, I'll use sports as an example, right? A hundred and twenty thousand would pay for our baseball program for a decade probably, right? Whereas that's two or three years in the Performing Arts Center that we're not really recouping anything on. So I'm just thinking about, you know, where are we getting the most out of our, out of the, the spend that we're about to commit? Saying that out?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So twenty-five years ago, the art center was built and it was built to become like the center, uh, piece for the arts programs in Swain County.
Mm-hmm.
The band, you know, we got our amazing band program, um, the musicals and, and such, and to give a place for kindergarten graduations and, you know, all the different things that happen in that facility. Um, and twenty-five years ago, that investment was made to create that. Um, now that facility is needing upgrading, if it's gonna continue. Now, it, it can limp along.
Yeah.
It can limp along, but I would say it's kinda like having a football field and needing to upgrade your football field so that your football team still has a place to play, um, and upgrading, you know, any other facility that we have. It's, the facility itself is in, and we have been slowly bringing it up, new curtains, uh, you know, a new sound system. Um, and it's night and day when you go and experience it now versus just a few years ago when the sound system was pretty bad. It was kind of embarrassing when we had bands come in and, and perform in that, in that venue. But now, it's a great venue and the building is an amazing building, the, the acoustics are amazing, it's, it's definitely worth investing in. And so this investment is literally a twenty-five year investment because we've got twenty-five to thirty years out of what we had. So, so we're looking at a twenty-five year future investment before we have to revisit this.
It's kinda like the HVAC systems too, you know? You get to the point where you can't find the parts that you need from the, 'cause they're so outdated. And a lot of things have become like really just digital, a lot of advan- advancements in the last twenty-five years, I think is probably a lot of what you're up against as well.
And if you, if you think about it, twenty-five years ago, if, if we had, when I, if it had been, decided to put ten thousand dollars away every year, we'd have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now and this is a bargain.
Yeah.
You know, and to, and so, you know, that's something that, and actually, we had the superintendent of Clay County come and tour through and that was my advice to them is like, if you build it, be sure to plan for the future upgrades because you'll spend the money, you'll have this amazing sys- space, but in twenty-five years, you're gonna ask a big ask, you know, upgrading sound systems, upgrading lighting. So it's more about having a, let's just invest a little bit each year would really be the way to go.
Yeah.
But here we are, we're here in this position where we can...
I think that's, that's the lesson learned at a takeaway is we, we need to start, uh, fi- finding a way to, you know, have funds set aside to pay for stuff like that. I mean, I think we need it, I think it's a good, like you said, we're, we're twenty-five years behind technology, but we, we should need to, uh, you know, going forward, we need to think about that when we're hosting events there.
We tend, we, we tend to use something up and not plan on its obsolescence. Uh, and we are running into a lot of, a lot of the outcome of that right now. So I think that's, that's a wise line of thought. Um, and so we probably should, Joe, we should look at, um, some type of a profit sharing opportunity on that. And I know that there's not anyone who would, um, who would refuse that. And so if we could, if we could put a thousand or two thousand dollars a year away just on the performances.
Mm-hmm.
Then that could be placed at least into a line item, you know, so that we'll have that for the future. I think that's, that's a wise idea for all of our, all of our...
Department?
But, yes, all of it.
But again, back to the, to, for example, the school functions, uh, band concerts, the, um, of course, the musical charges, but they, they have huge expenses as well, you know, they have royalty payments and, and mark, and marketing and all the other things that, that go into that. Um, but, you know, the band concerts and all the other events that we usually host are usually free of charge, you know? We provide it for the parents, we provide it for the community. So it's...
I don't think that they would mind though if we charged a dollar a person or two dollars a person to help pay for that.
Yeah, I mean, you might even have an event, uh, one event a year saying, hey, this, all the funds for this go to keep our Performing Arts Center up to grade. And I think people would come to that and donate to them.
That's a good idea.
Or like one weekend of the Wizard of Oz, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, that's gonna go, I mean, 'cause that's a big crowd and a, and a big, um, I guess, a, a big charge, five or six dollars, you know, I mean, it's not a large charge, don't get me wrong, but I'm saying, you know, um, we're actually charging for that, but, yeah, usually they all go back to the vocal ensemble or the, um, what do you call that now? What's the class called now?
I don't, I don't even have an idea anymore.
Yeah, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yes. And we're trying to raise revenue in all of our other areas, aren't we? You know? So why not make it, make it fair across the board? I think that's your point.
That is.
Okay. Alright, we'll look at that, alright?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anything else y'all wanna go back and talk about or?
That was it on the discussion.
We good? Okay. Um, I would like to recommend to the Swain County Board of Education that you approve the consent agenda that includes personnel, the minutes of the October thirteenth and October twentieth meetings.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the district and schools' improvement plans that you have been listening to for the past three meetings.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands.
I would like to know how you would like to word the motion about the school bus wage and bonus plan.
Is that, can, can we approve that with that being an item that maybe Dennis and I can go back and forth with and solve by tomorrow or something, or do we have to have that hashed out tonight?
I think if you're going to affect the expense involved, it needs to be resolved.
Okay.
Okay? So if you would prefer to work on that some more, we don't have to make a decision tonight. You don't have to make a decision tonight. And you could, uh, you could put that in place and approve of it digitally and bring it back into open session in December.
I, I don't wanna delay it, I wanna get it out there immediately. And if we need to, I, I would rather amend that part of it at a later time. Uh, like I said, the faster we can get this acted on, the better in my mind.
Okay.
So why don't we do, why don't we approve it as is and then we'll try, we'll amend it?
I was about to say, yeah, if we approve as is and there's any changes, then we can approve a revision later on.
That.
Is that okay?
I, I think that's okay.
Okay.
Alright.
But it'd be the most...
I just need your thumbs up.
Be the last one you gave us, not the one initially.
Yes.
So we might have to state that the most...
Let's, let's call it something if you would, um, what plan?
Let me find it. May I borrow your...
A, a, a plan for excused absences.
Okay. Um, I'm going to recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve a bus wage and bonus plan that provides certified staff a flat rate, hourly staff a monthly bonus with the opportunity for approved absences that will not count against them. That's the only way I know how to say that right now.
I think that works. Okay.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
You ever wanna say something?
No, I, I know what he was talking about, the absence is not becoming an issue that, 'cause that's what we're trying to get away from and, and I understand what Casey's saying, there, there needs to be some leeway there, but you don't wanna excessive absences to come, keep popping up.
To, to my understanding, the way the motion would be, RL, is that as it sits right now is what will go into place today. What Mark recommends and the motion would be is leaving open the discussion for anything further, but this, as it stands right now, is, it will be passed tonight.
Yeah.
If we wanna change anything later, that revision will come back to us to vote on again.
So we, we can do an amendment to this policy that'll, that'll be the excused absence policy, just be an amendment.
Then it gets the money flowing.
That way we can approve it today as is.
As is, okay.
Do you, do you feel like there needs to be an amendment to the motion for clarification?
No. I think that that, I think that was, I just was gonna make it, Robert, for a point of clarification, uh, to clarify that, that with the way that it is, with the option for that to come at a later date has been expressed and that was my understanding, as long as we're on, all under the same understanding, we can operate that way.
Are we, we all in a, are you, excuse me, are you all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay, Joanne, did you get that down?
It'll be kinda recorded.
We'll work, we'll work on it tomorrow.
Yes, as is right now.
As is right now, with the option for the further discussion and would be presented as a revision, if any comes, will be presented as a revision.
Through digital approval and then by the December meeting.
That will be discussed and voted on separately.
That's a good idea. And Mitch was adding that, uh, you know, that could happen with digital revision with open approval at the next meeting.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay?
Okay.
Alright.
So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Pass it to you.
I wanna recommend to the Swain County School Board that you approve policy forty-three eighteen wireless communication with the additions that were presented to you tonight.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Pass it to you.
And I wanna recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the Article forty-six request as presented with the understanding that we're going to seek additional funding for the batting cages or support for construction and also that we're going to look at how we can in, increase the revenue for the maintenance and upgrade of the building itself.
Okay.
I want those pieces in there as a recommendation. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that that's fine, as long as it, yeah, I think that that's clear.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
I'll second it.
With motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Pass it to you.
Would love for us to set up a time that we can hold a special meeting and I would really, I know I'm pushing on this and I know that thanks to that, November's a busy time, but I would love for us to do this in November before the December meeting. I think that we need to get started on this. Um, would you like for me to send some dates out to you or for you all to send to me some dates and then share them, um, and then we can come up with a time?
A special meeting.
A special meeting to talk about the different formative assessments, summative assessments and to look, continue to look at that NC Star plan, those plans. 'Cause I think that, and to involve not only administration, but also some staff, some teachers, we need to hear their voice in this. teachers. We need to hear their voice in this, in my opinion. So, how would you like to handle that, Casey? You're not Casey, he's Casey, you're Cody.
Send some, if you could, send some dates.
Okay.
And then that way I can look and block him out from that point.
Okay. Because that's gonna be a two-hour meeting anyhow. And I assume that you're gonna want that in early evening. Is that better for y'all?
Yeah.
Is early evening better for you all? Okay? And are there some weeks that you, or some days that you want to stay away from automatically? The week of Thanksgiving, stay away from it?
Yeah, stay away from Thanksgiving.
Month of November for me.
Do you want me to, do you want me to read off the dates? We should stay away from it.
Well, do you, you wanna try, you wanna try the first week of December?
Oh, I don't think it's gonna make any...
You just pick some dates.
Yeah, agreed.
Pick some dates.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's, it's fair.
You're talking about bringing teachers in.
Yes.
You're not, there's not a work day in, in the...
Is there a work day?
There is next Monday, right?
Yeah, we're, we're, we have professional development.
Yeah, and that's kinda short, I understand.
All of us. We just have, there's not a work day.
Yep, just pick some dates and we'll narrow it down.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay. Next regular meeting is December the eighth. Okay? We need for y'all to, we need for y'all to dress up on one of these meetings so we can take a picture, because the old picture still has Jerry in it. And as much as I love him, he don't look like you, Casey.
Okay.
Okay?
Much better looking.
Five o'clock. Five o'clock, on the eighth, dress up and we'll take a picture.
Five o'clock.
Okay?
Or do we need to meet a little bit early for a picture, or just?
We just, just get here a little early, yeah, fifteen minutes.
Is that a good for you?
Everybody wear a suit and tie.
It's a fox in right now.
I've got two things in that, but it's just, December's gonna be too hard to really reschedule, so...
Do you even own a suit?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to...
You don't have to wear a suit.
Trying to find that basketball schedule.
The same night.
See what December eighth looks like, but we'll pencil it in for now.
Okay, right. Anything else for tonight?
I think that's it.
I vote that we take an offering and say a prayer at home.
But did it say we were coming early that night?
Fifteen, fifteen minutes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It'll be dark, right?
Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Leading to adjourn.
That's for...
Yeah.
December eighth. Talking about taking this to the commissioners, did you?
I think that that's what we're talking to about.
Yeah, I think it is, though.
Yeah.